Good morning, and welcome to the public mechanic commissioners. Director's scheduled meeting of January 15th, 2019 is nine o'clock in the morning. Please rise for the flight.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to item three, the need citizens are going to be heard. Hearing none. Very loud. Item four, consideration of possible action to approve minutes of January 7th. So I think we approve. Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. Item five, consideration possible action to approve final plat of Brighton Phase Two in the northeast quarter of 36-15 north and three west.
It's not in the neighborhood, it's the same neighborhood as the one we have now. They just changed the lot size on it, they don't make lots.
I changed the lot size.
Huh?
Yeah, I just changed the lot size. All righty. Sure, thank you. I guess up here.
How's that?
That ain't working?
No, 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 I meant so he can slide this way because he's got a second copy to sign.
Okay.
You don't have a line?
Yeah.
Chair and vice chair, that's good enough.
You want to sign below it?
I can.
Since two out of the three, I'd go ahead.
It really should be for the boy.
And that one's not right now.
Yeah, there's three.
Well.
One's that large.
It said three commissioners.
These three?
Last time it said commissioners and then we had to change it. It says chairperson now and then it says vice chair. I thought it couldn't say, he didn't want to say three chairpersons.
Well, they're not all chairpersons. Chair is just the director for these meetings, but they're all three commissioners. This board is of three members.
So what should the line say?
Just member.
Megan Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Member.
Okay, member, thank you. I tell them every time I go back.
I was thinking Larry Curly and Bo, but.
Curly. Trying to figure out which one I am. The lock is her too. Just funning you.
I mean, if that one's hers, I've got one here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve since I was saying. I have a motion to approve. Second. A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Give it up. Damon, you see what? I gotta put it through. Several reasons for that. All right, item number six, open sealed bid 2019-11 for five month laid in place asphalt upon order and consideration of possible action to award said bid.
So I am going to recommend to the board that we reject the bid without opening. We did receive three and the reason being the way it was specced was just to flat how much per ton to lay. In the past, it was brought to my attention that we had actually staggered those specs to go from like zero to 500 tons and that price and then up. And apparently it will, if we respec it in that manner, we may end up with a better bid.
So what they're saying is if you call them up and they come out to lay a quarter of a mile, he's going to charge you, it'd be cheaper for him to lay them full mile as a quarter mile. So they're going to bid it pretty high to cover in case they have to do 200 feet versus getting to do a whole mile. So the prices will be a lot higher.
Possibly.
Possibly, I don't know that, but.
Definitely Paul.
It's, we received three, they're sealed, I have no idea what's in them. I'm just saying that this board can decide based on this whether to reject without opening and I'll send them back out.
So that's feedback we received from the vendors that didn't come through the bid process because they're sealed.
It's feedback I received because in the past they had been done on a tiered level and so it was brought to my attention that the specs were different. You've got to remember, we had to quit doing laid in place several years ago and that just wasn't in my head when I sent these out.
Right.
And so that.
But we can open them and reject them.
I don't think that's fair, but.
Shouldn't be.
I'm just saying before we moved forward, this was what I was throwing out there was that they're, because it's specced to one ton being priced the same as 5,000 tons to be laid down as opposed to having it scattered.
In other words, the parameters of these, this bid was changed from what we used to do and so they're confused as to how they need to do it. So I understand that if you change your volumes that you're looking at purchasing minimum volumes that you can get a better deal on a higher volume for a product. I got that. That's something that we just, that's something new that's been introduced right since we put this out for bid. So we can either cancel and put the bid back out again with the updated contract specs or we can open the bids, look at what we got and still put out a new request for contract bids with the new specs, right?
I think this board could do either. I think in light of this, in my personal opinion, it would be kind of unfair to make these bids public record knowing they're going to, I mean, and then reject them because all the competitors are going to have all the bid prices, so, I mean.
So if we accepted one of the ones that's already bid, are we locked in for five months or can we rebid that with new specs?
No, we'd be, we would be in.
For five months?
As are they.
My opinion, I need to reject.
My opinion is cheaper if you bid each project separately anyway.
Can be.
Because they're going to give me a bid price in northern Logan County, we're all going to have the same bid price, then if you're laying down on Waterloo Road, I mean, you know they'd do that project cheaper than what they're going to do the one on Waterloo Road.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we get materials delivered the same way, I mean, it's delivered based on where we're at.
Mileage.
Basically.
Put there if you want to, don't bother me because I'm going to lay mine anyway.
Okay, well.
Unless they're cheaper.
If you're going to reject. Even if we don't get it, we don't know. Even if they go out for a new bid, you're still going to reject that and then just do it.
If I had in the back of my mind that I had every intention of rejecting them, I wouldn't even know. Because I think that would be true, it would be fair to the other vendors that did bid. Now all the other guys get to see their prices and they get a bid. Don't matter to me, that's all.
Chances are timely when you're late in place, so I don't.
How long would it take you to go back out for bids?
With publishing and getting them back in here, yeah, probably.
Chances are you're going to lay in January and February anyway.
That's true. I don't think there's any problem about rejecting it from that standpoint. Asphalt truckers from Alaska, they lay asphalt minus 47 degrees.
See, might be a little more expensive though.
Money's not, I mean, it's no object that's there.
Yeah. Seems to be a problem in Logan County. Whatever y'all want to do, I don't care.
Well, I'll accept a motion one way or the other. Motion reject. Have a motion to reject, do I have a second?
You want a second?
Well, I could.
I mean, can, or are you going to?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? To reject without looking.
So I would like to make that clear, we're going to reject without opening and it's all due to faulty specs. I mean, I'll, and I'll note that.
Okay. I think that's for, any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection.
It'll spin out as fast as I can.
Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve resolution accepting $50 each donation from Jeffrey Pettit, H.L. Pettit, Tracy Pruitt to District Two for asphalt patch on Willow Creek Drive. Make the motion to accept. I'll second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item made consideration of possible action to approve resolution accepting $47.05 refund from AT&amp;T and depositing to OSU general fund account.
OSU's changed their internet service from AT&amp;T to Cox and in that shift over, there was a refund issued. We have to do it this way because it's a change to their general fund, so for me to put this money back in their general fund, it has to be approved.
I'll move we approve, second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve CBRI funds for payment to Millie Vance Incorporated in the amount of $4,000 for CDBG grant administration.
I'll move we approve, second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 10, consideration of possible action to approve memorandum of agreement between Sheriff's Office and Vance Air Force Base for prisoner housing.
That dude kept going here, Sheriff.
Air Force is in the prison now.
Well, they've got one guy that's looking at a court martial and they're looking for a place to housing. They were using Garfield County, but due to some of the things that happened over there, they don't feel comfortable using them and they've approached us. The agreement was drawn up, sent to law, back and forth changes, and we got something we can all agree on.
So you was good with it along with us as well?
Yes, sir.
So did they check a lot of jails before they chose yours?
I honestly don't know where all they checked. I know that we were of interest because we do house federal inmates currently and we meet the criteria of what they demand, so that was, I think, one of the interests to come to us is because they knew that we meet the standard that the federal government required.
Damon, have you ever broken down to what you think it costs a day to house a prisoner?
Since I've been there, no. The, you know, the state basically sets the rate for, the minimum is $27 a day. With some of the requirements in out of county, we tend to bump the price up because they're not from our county. If they want, if they want to use our facility out of county, they're going to pay for it.
To what do they pay?
$80 a day.
I'll move we approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 11, consideration of possible action on resolution appointing requisitioning officers for various accounts.
None for 11 and 12.
11 and 12 for. Item 13, consideration of possible action on approving following permanent road crossing permit for Cox Comm and Incorporated. That's a .875 coax line down Charter Road in Santa Fe, crossing in parallel. And then. I'll move we approve that first.
I'll second.
Item 14, consideration of possible action to approve temporary road crossing permits for select energy services, a 12-inch water line parallels Council, Simmons and Council, and then parallels Waterloo, .4 miles east of Council in Waterloo, and then parallel Simmons Road, .2 miles west of Simmons Council. I move we approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. Item 15, consideration of possible action on consent agenda.
In the room. Three in spurs.
Before I forget it, on that bid, snakes weren't we redoing, can we do it in zones? So, you know, we can get the best rate we can.
We did, this, this one was in zoned. I mean, we still zoned it, we just didn't stagger the quantity.
One groups.
So Troy, have we received any, any applications back for the medical ambulance district?
Not that I'm aware of. I can ask Sarah if they were directed to.
Okay.
Sarah, have you got any?
None have been received.
Has anyone filed for free fare?
Not yet.
That's all this week?
Yes.
I got the Friday?
Yes.
Starts today?
Filing period started yesterday till 4:30 on Friday.
File.
Election is February 1st.
Got you. Thanks for the re-pleasure.
Oh, is that on the website?
The filing for free fare?
Yeah.
I'll double check, I don't remember.
Because I can get it from there.
Well, I'm sorry.
Might just have been working on it.
It's all right.
If not, I'll.
No.
I don't think it is.
I think I would have saw it, put it out.
Oh, this is all the sheriff stuff.
Officer reports.
Troy, I didn't see the calendar on the website. I saw the description of the tenant commissioner.
You mean calendar?
I thought there used to be a calendar that showed.
If you scroll down, when you land on the homepage, if you scroll down right to the center is the calendar. It's not a little square, it's blocked and then you can hit view more and it pulls up the actual month calendar.
Go post. Got a six-year-old granddaughter can explain that to you.
I was looking at last night, I kept looking for a calendar, I saw y'all prior agendas, but I didn't see.
If you go to the front page and scroll down.
Just do that notification system and they'll send it right to you.
And that's, that's the, that's the thing, sign up and they'll send them to your email.
Do you want me to sign up?
Nope.
No searching, no? Thanks to mommy.
But wait, there's more.
There might be, you know, we know what I get in the mood, oh, let me go add a bit, let me go tweak that.
Oh, I'm here.
What would it be?
Just pay shipping and handling.
Just shift down, Bonnie. Have you got the website up? That's my, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, so calendar, and then if you go down and hit view all, there you, a real.
No, mid, no. Leave me alone.
Haven't had your coffee yet?
I'm so glad you paid all that money for that fancy education.
Where'd you go to school, Bonnie?
I can't tell you while we're in session. It's a very interesting story though, I do grant you that if you want to hear.
Bonnie, did you go to the inauguration and ceremony and banquet?
He wouldn't have missed it certainly. That's his cup of tea.
You went there?
Did you wear a tie?
He was in his formal, had little corsage.
I see there, yeah.
I thought I saw you on the news.
Thought I seen you on there too.
He was dressed a little different though.
Lead story.
I don't remember him, but.
Orange striped jumpsuit.
Big orange.
What are your bracelets on, Joe? I'll give you that.
Go post. Chris keeps up, I might have to move into Logan County.
Oh, I doubt that happens.
Well, that's this.
At that wonderful hotel, Bonnie, for.
We can give you. That little dang dip ready to come in today.
Told you another hundred bucks, might get you another passport.
Yeah, you can count it on $27.
You're going to have to decide, you moving up or not?
I don't know how they figure $27 covers the cost. It doesn't.
Well, we need to revisit that to get a court of justice to raise down the state rate.
Hourly wage times 24, let alone meals, medical supplies.
I get one at Turner.
You guys got an overcrowding problem?
No, sir.
Visit first.
Yeah, inside release a lot.
Big jail.
Big jail?
Pretty good size.
How many's a hole?
About 200.
What do you got in there now? And they got space for one more.
350. Host 200, we've got 350 in there. We're getting one.
I bet to you we're going to sell just for you.
I got, I turned the schedule meetings and they're all approved and consent agenda.
Okay, have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item 16, consideration of possible action on proving claims for payment for January 2019. I was always partial to that Cool Hand Luke jail count, you know, that every night they'd go through and then, you know, count toes. And. Do you have any in the box? I mean, that always was, yeah. That would be, that would be interesting to hear that count, put it out on the floor once. So, does anybody else notice the similarity between the old Dunkin' Donuts sign and the new Missy's Donut sign?
They both say donuts on it?
No, it's the, the picture of the donuts that looks exactly like the old Dunkin' Donuts sign. Color, everything.
Is that right, Damon?
I usually don't pay attention to the sign.
Why is he looking at you?
Cause I'm a donut connoisseur. I'm the knower of donuts.
Expert. The knower of donuts.
He went to DC Donut Convention.
College.
Oh, my goodness.
Does Dunkin' Donuts still exist and...
Yeah. I bet that's it. I went on vacation on the...
The copy does.
East side and they're everywhere. Or at north, they're everywhere.
Cause they never had a missing donut. Yeah, it's got a picture of a donut with sprinkles on it and a couple of others lined up and it says Missy's Donuts. I don't know. It's a great sign. Great donuts. They just ripped it off from somebody else. Unless they bought it. I'd be real impressed.
Maybe just the, the sprinkles are yellow, not pink.
Yellow, pink, it's, yeah.
That's the difference. Brand name.
They got really good sandwiches there.
They make sandwiches at the donut shop.
Mm-hmm.
Great sandwiches.
Oh, really? Chicken salad, salad.
Missy's is our little jewel around here.
Where's it at?
Out at thirty-five and thirty-three.
It was, uh...
You can go north on Seventy-Six.
North, yeah, north on Seventy-Six. They make great sandwiches, all on homemade, fresh baked bread.
Yep.
Chicken enchilada soup that is really good.
Oh, there's, if there's nothing that's not good.
Yeah, there's nothing that's not good.
Nothing.
Yeah.
I'll move with approval to claim that.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have none for item seventeen.
Alright, item eighteen, any citizen desiring to be here?
Bobby. All's good in the hood right now.
All's good in the hood. Just going through the...
Oh, about bureaucracy, people...
I'd box all of that. I think everybody's good at the moment.
Placated, maybe.
Nothing going on here, meanwhile.
These aren't the droids you're looking for.
Let me sit there, please, with hangover. I'm just saying, I just...
Yeah. Alright. Item nineteen, comments, announcements, questions by the board of county commissioners. Mike, you got anything?
I don't know if I mentioned about planes, pipelines, looking to put another line next to the two they already have. Going through the county.
That was...
Just part of information.
That always helps the roads out when they do that for us. No gravel, but mainly damage. Yeah. And it goes through my yard. Oh, well.
I think that was mine.
That's it. Bonnie?
Um, our next agenda, I would like an agenda item, maybe using some of the CBRI money for a road project. Maybe for all three districts. I don't know if these guys have anything they want to hear or not. I noticed we're getting a little revenue built up in that account and I would like to use some of it for some gravel projects. That's all I got.
Alright. So, yes, sir?
I, I was gonna update the board. I know I'm kind of out of turn here. I should've gone before you guys started. But, uh, we got our new camera system installed in the, the pension center, uh, Sheriff's Office, as well as the courthouse. Uh, so that project is done. They got a few things to come in and kind of do. But, uh, the camera system is up and operational and it's pretty phenomenal. Uh, Troy, you got access to it yet?
Mm-mm.
Okay, we'll get you access to it.
Okay.
It's, it's quite the upgrade. Staff is pretty excited about it. Inmates come home sometimes, but staff's excited about it.
There's always gotta be those nice players, yeah.
It was a good upgrade to the, to the facility. Glad we were able to do that.
Great, great. Thanks for sharing. Anything else?
No, sir, I'm done.
No, thank you, thank you very much. Alright, uh...
Hi, um...
Yes, ma'am.
I have another walkthrough with a different vendor for access control quote at nine o'clock in the morning. So, if any of you wanna be here for that.
Hey, I can't make it, I'm sorry.
We're so in your capable hands.
Could be what I thought.
Big deal for the chairman, I do.
I'm gonna be at the donut shop.
Well, maybe you and the sheriff can get donuts for Adam, make him help me.
They're supposed to be testing a new style, a new, a new flavor donut. I'm starting that right now, just...
Oh, it's like you said.
I didn't want to start a stampede.
It's like notifications that to be a tester. I was kind of disappointed I hadn't got that bit.
This is in meeting notes, right?
So...
It depends on how nice they are to me.
Troy, if you'd like for me to be there?
Did you have anything else, Troy?
Have me too.
Alright, moving right along. Uh, Troy sent out this, uh, this updated, uh, application from DEQ for the Brownsfield assessment for the six-story building next door. Um, I, I brought a copy of it if anybody'd like to look at it. I, I would also like to maybe ask that we add this to our next agenda item to maybe take action on...
Well, I, I'm still trying to, to fill in a couple of those blanks. Uh, I, I, I will put it on gladly, uh, with discussion and, and revision if necessary. Will that work? Because I think there's a couple of items the board needs to discuss before I can fill them in.
What, what might those be?
Uh, financial commitment for one.
Right.
It's requested in that.
Uh-huh. And then what else?
And off the top of my head, I don't remember. It seems to me like I had another blank box. You know, I, I was kind of flying blind filling that thing in and trying to...
Alright, so, yeah, so if we could put on for next meeting, discussion, poss, possible action and, and possible approval of application. I could go work through it. Thanks for doing this. Anything else? Well then, we'll move on to item twenty.
I'll move with Jerry.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.